Stand, we're gonna do the prayer and the pugilizations of the flag.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this glorious time. Thank you for bestowing on our county all of your blessings. Thank you for the, just the wonderful citizens we have, thank you for the wonderful council we have that are entrusted with making those decisions. On behalf of all those citizens of our county, please guide us with your wisdom to make the best decisions we possibly can. And just to be good stewards of you and your work, in Jesus' most precious and only name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without any end.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Step, good job, okay. On tonight's agenda, the eleventh, do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Council President, if I may, could I put in a request to remove under number seven, County Manager's Report? Section E, request from Department of Economic Development and Tourism for letter of support for establishment of Chesapeake National Recreation Area, if we could postpone that, please.
Okay, second. Okay, we've got a motion and second it to...
To amend the agenda.
To amend the agenda, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so moving on with the dispersments of July 4th and July 11th. The council has had a chance to take a look at both meetings, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments?
No.
Okay, hearing none, that the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent, okay. All right. Next on the agenda is a proclamation of Parks and Rec Month. Preston, you want to come on up here? It's your month, you know, it's your month. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read the proclamation to the record, please?
Proclamation, Parks and Recreation Month, July 2023. Whereas communities nationwide are realizing the significant benefits that recreational activities and leisure experiences provide to their populations. And whereas parks, playgrounds, ballfields, nature trails, open spaces, and recreational facilities are an integral part of those recreational activities and leisure experiences by providing all age groups with a welcome respite from society's fast-paced, high-tech lifestyle. In addition to making communities more attractive and desirable places to visit, live, work, and play. And whereas the community-based parks and recreational agencies which organize, manage, and host the recreational and leisure activities and programs within their communities influence the lives of individuals, families, and groups in those communities and positively impact the social, economic, health, and environmental quality of the surrounding community. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2023 as Parks and Recreation Month in Talbot County and encourage all citizens to celebrate by participating in the variety of recreational and leisure activities offered by Talbot County Department of Parks and Recreation. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County, this eleventh day of July in the year of our Lord, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Okay, got a motion, second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, welcome, Preston.
Thank you, I'm a little bit of a loss here, I'm not used to going before eight o'clock at night.
That's fine, that's fine, man, that's fine.
But, I just want to say thank you for approving this proclamation, I just wanted to run through some facts and figures just real quick. I'll do them as fast as I possibly can. According to the National Recreation and Park Association's 2022 Engagement with Parks Report, people place a high value of the programs and services that Parks and Recreation Agencies deliver to their local communities every day and strongly support their mission. Two hundred and seventy-five million people in the United States visited a local park or recreation facility at least once during the past year. Nearly three in four U.S. residents have at least one local park, playground, open space, or recreation center within walking distance of their homes. Eighty-four percent of U.S. adults seek high-quality parks and recreation when choosing a place to live. Nine in ten people agree Parks and Recreation is an important service provided by their local government. Nearly three in four people agree equity should be an extremely or very important goal for their local Parks and Recreation Agencies. Living close to parks and other recreation facilities is consistently related to higher physical activity levels for both adults and youth. Moreover, parks provide a connection to nature, which studies demonstrate relieve stress, strengthens interpersonal relationships, and improves mental health. Local Parks and Recreation Agencies collectively manage more than eleven million acres of open space across the United States. The outdoor recreation economy, which includes local parks and recreation, accounted for four hundred and fifty-four billion of the 2021 U.S. Gross Demexter product. And local Parks and Recreation Agencies employ more than three hundred and eighty-five thousand full-time and part-time employees in 2019, according to the U.S. Census Bureau. That translates to almost forty-nine billion in operation spending by the nation's more than ten thousand local Parks and Recreation Agencies. Here in Maryland, established under the Department of Natural Resources in nineteen sixty-nine, Program Open Space symbolizes Maryland's long-term commitment to conserving our natural resources while providing exceptional outdoor recreation opportunities for our citizens. Today, more than sixty-nine thousand Parks and Conservation Area projects have been assisted through Program Open Space local grants. In two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, all the counties of Maryland were able to use what's called an LPPI, which is the Land, Parks, Playgrounds Infrastructure Bill, to create even more opportunities beyond the Program Open Space. And there are nearly one hundred Parks and Rec Agencies across Maryland, including both counties and municipalities. And here at Talbot County, in the past ten years, we've created two major park projects in Oxford and the Frederick Douglass Park on the Tuckahoe. We've continued maintenance and improvement at all of our county landings. Our summer camp has grown from not having a camp to sixty kids each and every week throughout the summer. The Recreation Department has increased its program offerings to two hundred and eighty-eight programs. We've grown our revenues from four hundred and ninety-nine thousand to seven hundred thousand with only a small increase in expenses, an increase of almost forty percent. And the two newest facilities will contribute to Parks and Rec with increased programs, tournaments, and events, the gymnasium and the pickleball courts. The pickleball courts have already been rented out for two tournaments already this summer, and the gym has already been reserved for club volleyball and AAU basketball as soon as it's complete.
Great, that's great. Alrighty then, okay.
Want to start with me?
Yeah, I'll start with you.
Well, Preston, I must say, you do a remarkable job with Parks and Rec. And we know, you know, those of us that are in the field of economic development know how important Parks and Rec Department is to the economy and the people here, especially during the summer, when you offer the summer programs for children when they're out of school, so kudos to you. Thank you for giving us those numbers and the increase, I think that's very valuable and important and clearly shows that there is a return on investment into the Parks and Recs Department, so thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
I'll reiterate that, thank you, and adopt what Councilwoman Hayth stated.
Thank you.
Well, we know very well all the exciting things that are going on in these parks, the improvements that you listed at Oxford Conservation Park and Frederick Douglass Park on the Tuckahoe, the facilities improvements at the Talbot County Community Center. But it's nice to have this additional opportunity to get the word out, there really are expanding opportunities and thank you, thank you for seeing to it that we're able to offer that to the public.
Thank you.
Preston, thanks, it's a privilege to serve on your board. As liaison, should I say, to the board. As you know, I mean, I'm personally in my second decade and spending a lot of time out to Hognek and, you know, other facilities as well and just in working with our youth, and it's been an absolute pleasure, we're doing great things here in Talbot County. If anyone hasn't stopped out to see any of the projects that the rest of the council has already mentioned, please do. Great things happening here in Talbot County, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, and I just, glad you're smiling, I'm glad you're smiling. You're doing a phenomenal job, Preston, we really do appreciate it, the pickleball and the new gymnasium and stuff, man, it's awesome, that's for sure. So you should be proud of that, as a community, we should be proud of that, that's for sure, so keep up the great work and now you can go home and eat.
We are gonna have a ribbon cutting for the pickleball, so I know some of you that are excited about playing.
I've seen pictures, I think I've seen pictures of you, were you playing pickleball, I've seen pictures.
No, I was in a picture, I wasn't playing, I'm not sure what I was, I don't know what I was doing.
Okay, what's he playing? All right, I got you, I got you.
They told Sarah she had...
I got you.
She had possi, she had potential, they just, they just told me to give the paddle to someone else.
That's good, well, we really appreciate everything, so we got something for you too. Okay, that's great, okay, now we're gonna do an update. Ray, you and Mike want to come on up, we'll do it on Leeds Creek, on the bridge, since you got it all done, you know? You're getting there, aren't you, huh? I got you.
I think it was on...
Well, waiting to load up, I guess. Give you kind of a real quick history of the Leeds Creek Bridge. We ended up, probably about eighteen, nineteen years ago, we did a preliminary engineering report to replace Leeds Creek Bridge. We then worked with the County Council at the time, I believe it was in FY 2007, if not 2008, the council appropriated one point eight million dollars towards the replacement of Leeds Creek Bridge. At that point, we then went to S.H.A. to see if we could utilize federal aid funding to replace that bridge. And ultimately, federal aid allows you, they provide you an eighty percent grant with twenty percent local funds being applied. At this point in time, though, when we did that, we had to utilize state highways, open-ended engineering services agreement. And that's when we hired Nolan, I guess Nolan Engineering. And then they were then bought out by Greenhorn Peterson Incorporated, which is GPI. So at this point, we are now at the, you know, because of the federal aid funding, we need to have a public meeting to meet the requirements of the National Environmental Policy Act. So that's what we're here before you all, before we set up that meeting. So we're just gonna give you a rundown on basically where we stand with the design. At the same time, just give you also a little bit of histories. At the time when we did the preliminary engineering report, the citizens at that point were looking to have the bridge raised. Unfortunately, because of the, I guess the span that we have, we can't raise it too high, so we ended up raising it at about two feet. So it's gonna have about an additional two feet of clearance above the water, so that's where we'll be at. The other thing, just to highlight, the bridge is probably gonna go from, I guess, from the bearing wall to the bearing wall is about three hundred and fifty-seven feet. So we're looking at a kind of a long span. At the same time, it's currently a timber deck with, you know, the timber piles. We are actually going to a steel piles, that's a requirement for the feds. In addition to the steel piles, we're actually gonna go to a laminated, what we call laminated deck. It's gonna be a wooden laminated deck, very similar to what we've done at Bellevue, Kingston, what's the other one, Bruceville and Money Make. So we've replaced a lot of our bridges with this laminated deck. The advantage we have with a laminated deck is you can actually pave over that wood surface, so it ends up preserving the wood beneath it for a longer period of time. Also, to provide, I guess, a little bit of a historic feel to this bridge, we'll be doing what we've also done with the other bridges, and that's using a timber rail setup, safety rail. So, and then I guess for the rite of passage for those kids that are getting out of high school, we're gonna make it a little taller so they can jump off, and we'll put no diving signs. But the other thing is, you'll see here, this is basically where the piles are being proposed. The piles are actually gonna be proposed basically almost in the center of where the existing piles are. So we're trying to set that up so they don't, they're not gonna interfere with a lot of the existing piles. This will result in the road being closed for a period of one year. So that's the other thing that will happen with this project. And then at this point, this, again, this is kind of coming in from Tunis Mills over here, coming over this way, that goes over to Copperville. We are also looking at doing some ramp improvements, there's a landing, whoops, I'm sorry. And then ultimately, we don't call it a swimming platform, but this is kind of like an unloading dock. So that, you know, we're keeping that as part of the bridge as well. That being said, this is the kind of the elevation view of the bridge, kind of showing what it would look like. As I mentioned, you know, if we try to go higher, we end up having, you know, our approach over here ends up having to go further back. And unfortunately, if you've been down on the Copperville side, it turns on us. So that's one of the reasons we're limited to what we can do in this area when we raise the bridge. So again, we are looking at raising it about two feet. At the same time, we're also gonna have, I believe, kind of a paved area for walking, so it'll almost have its own little sidewalk scenario, so it'll be a little wider than we normally have today, and it'll have the ability for somebody to walk over. And then this is just kind of, this is a, this is just one of, another side I think we added that basically is just kind of showing, you know, the, you know, from out from this superstructure. And then this here was basically an exaggeration of the kind of a horizontal versus vertical. So what will be done here is it kind of just exaggerates the vertical look of the bridge. So this is not really, I mean, it's scaled, but ultimately, this is kind of a, at a closer scale than what we have down on the horizontal scale. So that kind of just kind of gives you a feel of that the bridge is gonna be going over and a little bit higher in the middle. And that being said, I think this is kind of the proposed, what we call maintenance of traffic. And we'll be looking at probably having to close pretty much just outside where Copperville is and then run people up around this way and then come back down and then hit Tunis Mills Bridge. The other option they would have, if they want, they can utilize other county roads to maneuver to, if they feel that's the necessary. It'd be easier to travel to and from. With all that being said, I think, whoops, one of the things we just will highlight, right now, I think the current estimate is about four point five million dollars at this point. We still have to go out the bid with this, so it's potential that this overall cost could be about six million dollars once we add all the other costs associated with the construction management and other components. That would then put the county's obligation roughly at about one point two million dollars. So be about four point eight million in federal aid. Again, I think we'll be looking at trying to schedule the public meeting, hopefully with, you know, later this month, if not early, probably more like August. The other thing that we have been talking about internally is basically providing kind of a half-mile radius out and letting property owners know in the half-mile radius of the closure. At the same time, we're thinking also of posting some of the information that we have on the county website for us as well so that we can, you know, direct people to that information. Any questions you might have at this point, or?
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I don't have questions, I just have one question. What is the population that the bridge serves? How much traffic is there on it?
The, it's kind of hard to say in the sense that a lot of people use that bridge whether they need to or not. So, but for example, the mailing we're getting ready to do is about two hundred people. So I would suspect that would be a good estimate of the population it serves.
Well, that's in Tunis Mills and Copperville, right?
Tunis Mills, Copperville, and just the surrounding area, yes.
And just for the record, this is somewhat of a historic bridge because the movie Silent Fall had a scene that was filmed on that bridge. Just saying.
Okay. The, I presume that the materials choices on this, some of them are guided certainly by maintaining the historical look and feel of this bridge. But the steel and concrete pilings, pierheads, that's driven by federal requirements. If we take the federal cost share, it comes with that structural requirement. What's the, what's the life expectancy of the new bridge?
I would say probably at least fifty to sixty years, at least.
I mean, ordinarily, they always say fifty years, but in all likelihood, I suspect it'll be well beyond that.
Could exceed that, okay.
The deck is treated timbers and it's the asphalt-wearing surface, keeps it from being torn up by traffic. The under, the substructure, which is steel and concrete, it should hold up for quite a while.
The old bridge is old enough that it was done with creosoted pilings. Do we have notes about the age of the current one?
The current bridge was built, I think, in the late fifties and then it was rehabbed in the eighties.
Eighties, I think, yeah, and they had jackets put on those wooden piles at that point.
That's one of the problems with the wooden piles is bugs and critters in the water like to eat the wood and it becomes quite a problem right around the tidal ridge.
Okay, thank you.
I will just thank you on behalf of all the youth and some adults in Talbot County for raising the deck height another two feet as well as keeping that, the access platform and stairs, so thank you for that. And also thank you for widening it just for safety for, you know, for all those who use it for its unintended purposes, so thank you.
And the last thing, what was the timeframe?
Right now, we are looking at, hopefully, once we go through the meeting, the NIPA meeting, we then will then, will now be clear to go ahead and negotiate for the right of way. Once we've negotiated for the right of way, we're looking, trying to push right now to go out the bid this, let's say, early next year, if not spring. So start construction potentially spring.
Okay. Good. Anybody else?
And Mike, do you want to talk about when the public meeting is taking place?
So if it's okay with the council, our intention is to have the meeting July 26th, six thirty to eight thirty. We've got a public notice that's ready to go in the paper and mailings to the community, but we wanted to wait, make sure it's okay with the council. It's a non-presentation type meeting, there'll be displays and our consultants and us will be there. And so people can come anytime between six thirty and eight thirty and ask questions or give comments.
And it's here?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's at the community center, that would sort of help.
Community center.
In the YO.
And I think that was at six o'clock, right?
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Okay, that's great. And look, this is just one thing, Ray, when we were working years ago together on this. So we've changed from doing a redecking to a new bridge, am I right?
No, actually, this was always gonna be replaced.
The whole bridge?
Yes, sir, due to the fact, as we were just talking about, those piles, those wooden piles, because they were jacketed. We currently now, that bridge, when it's, we have like bridge inspections done every two years.
Right.
It's now structurally deficient, so that's, we're now in a position where we need to replace it.
Good, all right, any other questions?
All right, guys, thanks for the update and appreciate the good work.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, all right, next, just gonna start the public hearing. And Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read Resolution 343 into the record, please?
Resolution number three forty-three, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap certain real properties located at two four six seven nine Yacht Club Road and two four seven... six seven nine Yacht Club Road and two four seven eight one Yacht Club Road, Saint Michael's, Maryland, shown on Tax Map twenty-three as parcel ninety-eight, lot one and lot sixty, respectively, from unprogrammed to S-one immediate priority status.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Madam Secretary. Uh, Ray, you want to go ahead and kind of do some of an overview on what this legislation means to everybody?
Yes, sir. This is actually be extending sewer, again, Ray Clark, county engineer, this be extending sewer to, uh, two lots, um, just out off of Yacht Club Road. Um, we currently, um, off of that, off of Yacht Club Road, every lot on Yacht Club Road, other than these two lots are served or with sewer service and they, they're available for immediate priority status for sewer service. Um, the Yacht Club Camp has requested sewer service for these lots. That came, I think, into us maybe about February, March. Ultimately, presented this to the Populares Advisory Board at their June fifteenth meeting and the board, Populares Advisory Board, uh, through a three to zero vote recommends that the county council adopt Resolution three four three. Um, and at the Ju- uh, July fifth meeting of the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission found Resolution three four three consistent with the comp plan as well. And ultimately, that was via a four to zero vote.
Good, that's great. That's great. Okay, um, all right. Uh, Mr. Thomas, did you want to say anything on this?
No, I don't have anything else to add.
You're good. Okay. All right, all right. At this time, um, just, um, I'll open it up, um, to public, um, and anybody would like to come up and speak on three forty-three? Okay? Um, all right, at this time, um, Madam Secretary, are, are we, is this eligible for vote?
If you bring, yes.
Okay.
No, not.
Okay. Um, so I guess it
One, one, one question. No, I, I'm not sure if this is for, for Mr. Clark, but, uh, these two properties, as I understand it, are not subdividable because of a conservation easement that's, that's in place and therefore, uh, include, extending water and sewer to these properties will only, will not add to the number of dwelling units that could be eligible or that could be developed on these properties.
That is, you are correct. And if I'm not mistaken, both these lots are what they call RC, or Resource Conservation Area. So they currently don't meet the necessary square footage to actually have any subdividing rights. So that's the
Thank, thank you. So just, just to be clear that, that this is, this extension of sewer is not opening up, uh, further development on Yacht Club Road?
And, and this would actually provide sewer to two existing, uh, improved parcels. Both, there are two houses or two structures on those parcels at this point.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And also, Ray, also, the, the owners of the properties are paying the cost
Yes.
for the water and sewer services, not the county.
Yes, they, yeah. No, no, the county, uh, and that, that's correct.
Okay. Good. Any, any other discussion? Okay. Um, okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and close. Okay, um, is there, is there a motion?
Uh, do, uh, do we need to, to move this to, to, to vote or is this simply eligible for vote? Do you simply call the roll?
Yeah, I think it's
It's been read twice.
This is
Yep.
Yeah.
You can just call the vote.
You can just ask her to call the roll.
Okay, um, so we don't need a motion second. Okay, all right. Um, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
All right, good. All right. Next on the agenda is, um, Resolution three forty-four. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that into the record?
Resolution number three forty-four, a resolution to adopt a temporary moratorium on the processing, review and approval of applications, site plans, permits and other authorizations for the location, construction and/or operation of businesses engaged in growing, processing and/or selling cannabis for a period of nine months to allow the county sufficient time to enact reasonable, thoughtful and lawful zoning requirements and other regulations pertaining thereto as deemed necessary to protect the public health, safety and welfare.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. So, okay, once again, I'll go ahead and open this, um, to the public. And if you want to come on up, I'll give you three minutes, um, for, um, individual and I'll give you five minutes if you're representing an organization. So, um, would anybody here to my left like to come up and talk about, uh, three forty-four? Okay. Anybody like to come on up on three forty-four? Yes, sir. Come on up. Yep.
Good evening.
Yes.
My name is Darryl Hill. I'm the owner and operator of Somber's Farm Dispensary in Cambridge. And I'm watching what you're doing here with curiosity and I understand what you're trying to achieve and that's to protect your community from an overwhelming of cannabis operations. Regretfully, this, the Cannabis Commission in the state of Maryland issued a lot of licenses which, in the long run, is probably not healthy for a lot of communities because it just interferes with day-to-day life. I can know, I can share with you my experience, like in Denver, Colorado, there's a dispensary every three blocks. Okay? I see by this bill what you're trying to do is prevent that from happening. And as an operator, I'm here to kind of support what you're doing. So I think this moratorium is, is a good thing. Take your time and take a look at it. Keep in mind this, trying to put it into an industrial area may work against you. Uh, and I know from experience because when I built my cannabis operation in Cambridge, the Cambridge Shopping Center next door, the Shore Line Shopping Center, said no, because Walmart had an agreement in their lease that said no other pharmacy can be in here. Now Walmart is sorry because they're washing the hundreds of people that are falling into our parking lot every day. These people come in and they spend a lot of money in New York County. They'll stop, they buy gas, they eat food. So it's a great economic stimulus. Where you put it is probably key. You may be shooting yourself in the foot just limited to industrial, so sites. I think a shopping mall is proper and it's not around any residents. It's not going to interfere with anybody's life. Yeah, we're going to move into Cambridge Marketplace Shopping Mall from there. And there's a lot of empty facilities in these malls. Banks are particularly suitable for cannabis dispensaries because they have one key thing that every dispensary must have and that's a vault. So the vault is there. The banks are about the right size. So you might want to consider open, opening up to certain commercial areas. I, I don't think in a commercial area it's going to interfere with community life particularly. And we've learned from experience, everybody was afraid when, when we opened. They, they thought it was going to be a reef of madness. That didn't happen. So, it's, we, we know that it's, it, it could be a great economic stimulus for Talbot County and, uh, but take your time. I think the moratorium is smart.
Yep.
Take a look at it. I'm here to offer my support and services to help you guide through this if, if you so wish. And, uh, you're going to get a fight from the cannabis commission and from the state because they, the state is trying to keep local communities from getting too involved in the selection process. But you have your rights to, to limit and do what you want to do. And, you know, we have a research staff that's here to help you.
Okay.
Go ahead and
That'd be great.
So I just wanted to put that on the table.
I appreciate it.
And support your, support this motion.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Hill. Appreciate it. Okay. Would anybody else like to, to go ahead and, um, comment on three forty-four? Okay. Um, discussion?
No.
A couple, a couple of questions. Mr. Thomas, we got a, um, a letter from one business owner, uh, questioning whether carrying a moratorium past January first could be, uh, I don't know whether it was takings or, uh, or contravening, uh, the, the intent of the state law here. Um, are, are we, are we putting ourselves in legal jeopardy by extending this moratorium beyond the date of the first available permit, state permits on January first?
Yes, you are. Uh, the state's going, going to push on you a little bit about this.
Would you, would you mind coming up here and just give us your opinion on that since you're in that business? And then, and then, Mr. Thomas, you can go ahead and, and say something.
I suspect that you're going to get the, the state pushing against you a little bit. They're, they're trying to limit the, trying to keep the local communities from getting too involved in the awarding process. But I think you have your, your own rights and I'm here to, you know, help you with it if I can. Uh, but, I mean, nothing bad's going to happen. All they can say is, no, you can't do it. They're not, they're not going. And, and I'm not sure how far they can go to do that. I think each community should be able to have a significant impact, input on who goes and what goes and where it goes and when.
I got you. Thank, thank you, Mr. Hill. Appreciate it.
I have a question.
Yeah, do you have, you have one?
Yeah, for him. Because you're in the city limits of Cambridge, right?
Yes.
Not the county proper.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So really, this is going to be specific to the municipalities and not really affected?
Well, it depends. You know, we, you can, we can be in the city of Easton or you could be outside of the city in Easton and still be in Calvert, Talbot County. Let's, let's take, uh, the airport industrial park, for example.
Right.
Which may be a place to put one of these things. And you've got other things to, to think about besides dispensaries. There are going to be licenses for cultivation plant, which is a big operation. And there are going to be licenses for processors. These are companies that take the flour from, and, and extract the oils and so forth. All, they issued a whole bunch of those licenses and they're going to be these big multinational companies forming all over this county trying to, you know, find spaces to do it. You don't want to turn your back on them because now this stuff is taxable. But again, the state is trying to, they, all the taxes go there. I don't know whether you as a county can even tax it or not. Uh, Mr. Callahan, I don't know whether you, had you looked, had they said anything about your taxation capacity in that regard?
I know there's a nine percent sales tax and there is a breakdown of how that gets portioned, but I couldn't
But they have to be to share it with you?
Very little.
It's in the statute, I believe.
Okay.
No local tax.
There is a nine percent sales tax that the state applies. I know because I pay it. But, uh, but I didn't know how they, you know, where they would go in terms of trying to.
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
I think it's one percent.
Okay.
I think that was part of the Mako bill and I think they agree. It was like one percent. It's very minimal for, for the counties, for all the counties in Maryland.
Okay, thanks a lot for coming tonight. I appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Thomas, you want to go ahead? Yep?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Lusher, to your question, um, so I think it's important to keep in mind that the county currently doesn't have any regulations regarding this. So, I mean, if today somebody wanted to open up a facility here, we don't even have anything permitting it to begin with. So.
But, but the state would not allow a license to be issued before January first, a new license?
A new license, only for exist, uh, the only ones that I believe that have license, the licenses now are existing medical holders that have converted over, converted their licenses over. So, um, I mean, I expect by, by December, certainly, we would have already be well underway with a, with an ordinance or the bill to amend the code to allow this anyway. So I think it'd be difficult after January first for somebody to say, well, the county's banned it, the county's not allowing it. Clearly, we are, the whole point of this is to allow us time to enact zoning regulations that comply with the, the Maryland Cannabis Reform Act, which really doesn't give great guidance on what the boundaries are for, for local governments. And all the local governments are grappling with this and how to have resol, how, how to have regulations that, um, allow the public to use cannabis and grow it and sell it while, um, you know, protecting the citizens, the communities as well.
And i- in the past, when we've done a moratorium to be able to put zoning in place, the most recent example was the solar regulation.
Yes.
Uh, and in that case, we were able to, uh, we, we did a five-month moratorium and I think we, we, we more or less stuck to that timetable, didn't we, with five and, five and six months to
I think it was very close.
You know. Is there any reason why this should take longer than that five or six months?
I think because this is so new and the guidance on local government's authority to regulate this is still evolving and is still somewhat unclear. I think we'll have a better picture over the next couple of months, um, of what that is going to look like. I know Mako and MML are providing guidance and training on this. So, um, I, I, I fully expect we can have something passed well before that nine-month period ends. But just to, I, we leave that extra time. It doesn't necessarily mean we have to take a whole nine months to, to do it. But that, I think that's a reasonable period.
And, and typically, the passage of legislation will, will, uh, will effectively lift the moratorium?
Yes. Well, I mean, it'll, it'll have a sixty-day period, waiting period after the bill is passed before it goes into effect. But that would, the moratorium would end.
Okay. Is that it? Okay.
I had a question, but I lost my thought.
Okay.
Forgot. Okay.
Okay, um, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I know what my question was. Will we be notified if there's a application for, um, license? Will the county be notified of a license for cannabis?
It would presumably go to, to Department of Planning and Zoning.
Okay. Okay, so we would be made, made aware. Okay.
Okay. Um, next, we have a, a series of, of capital enabled on bills, um, bills numbers fifteen thirty-one through fifteen forty-three. Um, Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and, when you get a chance, go ahead and, um, read down through the bills for us?
Mm-hmm.
And, um, Mr. Sparks, you want to, you want to come on up? Case, once we, once we get that done, um, you know, we're going to reach out and, and see if anybody, uh, has any, um, I'm going to open it to the public, see if anybody wants to come up and talk about any of these bills.
Bill number fifteen thirty-one, a bill to amend bill numbers thirteen ninety-three, fourteen fifty-two and fourteen eighty, to amend the appropriation for the development of the Frederick Douglass Park on the Tuckahoe located at one three two one three Lewis Town Road, Queen Anne, Maryland. Bill number fifteen thirty-two, a bill to amend bill number fifteen sixteen for the purpose of amending the appropriation for improvements to and expansion of the Saint Michael's branch of the Talbot County Free Library. Bill number fifteen thirty-three, a bill to authorize improvements to the Talbot County Detention Center. Bill number fifteen thirty-four, a bill to amend bill numbers fourteen twenty-four and fourteen eighty-six for the purpose of amending the appropriation to purchase improved or unimproved real property for future county purposes. Bill number fifteen twenty-five, fifteen thirty-five, a bill to amend bill number fourteen eighty-eight for the purpose of amending the appropriation for the upgrade or replacement of the wastewater treatment plant at the Preserve at Y Mills. Bill number fifteen thirty-six, a bill to amend bill number eleven eighty-seven for the purpose of authorizing the appropriation for extension of water and sewer lines to the proposed University of Maryland Shore Regional Medical Center Hospital Site located between Longwoods Road, Maryland Route six sixty-two and US Route fifty in Easton, Maryland. Bill number fifteen thirty-seven, a bill to amend bill numbers fourteen eighty-four and fifteen oh nine for the purpose of amending the appropriation for a capital project for the construction of emergency medical services stations. Bill number fifteen thirty-eight, a bill to authorize improvements to and expansion of the Chapel District Elementary School. Bill number fifteen thirty-nine, a bill to authorize the construction of and improvements to a driving range complex at the Talbot County Hog Neck Golf Course. Bill number fifteen forty, a bill to amend bill number fifteen, fourteen sixty for the purpose of amending the appropriation for a gymnasium addition to the Talbot County Community Center. Bill number fifteen forty-one, a bill to amend bill number fifteen oh six for the purpose of authorizing the appropriation for improvements to for the purpose of authorizing the appropriation for improvements to county roads. Bill number fifteen forty-two, a bill to amend bill number fifteen oh-five for the purpose of authorizing the appropriation for replacement of a nine-one-one Division Computer Aided Dispatch CAD system. Bill number fifteen forty-three, a bill to authorize replacement of the roof of the White Marsh Elementary School.
Okay.
That's, that's a separate issue, not capital.
Okay, um, at this time, uh, Mr. Sparks, um, would you, do, do you need to, would you wanna tell us and review in, any of these bills right now?
Um, I, I, I think maybe it'd just be a good time to briefly highlight that this is part of our budgeting process. For the residents that are listening, um, this is part of our budget process. These have tentatively been approved by council to be included. And then we go through this capital enabling legislation where there, um, there's more formal review, public comment on each individual one. That's why they're each placed in their own, but this has, um, been approved up to this, or, or tentatively approved or up to this point.
Okay, all right, that's good. All right, I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, so now at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open it to the public. Um, and you'll have three minutes to come up and speak about any of these bills. Five minutes if you're representing, um, an organization, so at this time, um, bill fifteen thirty-one and fifteen forty-three, um, any of those bills that you heard, please come up and if you wanna go ahead and comment on one of these bills, please feel welcome to come on up. Anybody here on my left? Okay, okay, okay. Anybody on my right that would like to come on up and speak about fifteen thirty-one or fifteen forty-three, any of these bills? Okay, anybody wants to come up? Sarah, you wanna come up and talk about them? No? Okay, all right. All right, okay, at this time, um, Madam Secretary, I'm just gonna ask you, or that, so first of all, do we have to, we can just call the vote on this one that's ready?
No, they're, they're, they're bills, so.
Okay, so it's, it's a next time. It's, it's a next meeting, correct? Okay, so we'll get, do we, do we, um, keep the, 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 uh, open?
Unless you bring them to third reader tonight, then they would be scheduled for vote on the twenty-fifth. But if you bring them to third reader tonight, then you can vote on them now.
Uh, we probably should wait, shouldn't we?
I, I, I don't see, I don't see an urgency for any, any one of these that needs to be advanced to a third reader this evening. They can go through the, the ordinary calendar process.
Yep.
Uh, while we are here, though, I do want to acknowledge the, uh, the presence of, of staff and board from the Talbot County Free Library, which has enabled legislation here. Maybe we do have a public comment on this one.
For clarification, I, I think maybe we missed something because I do think they, they wanted to comment.
Oh, sure, absolutely. Come, yeah, come on up and, you sure? Yep, yep. We only take good comments now, okay?
I'll be pleased.
Okay, all right, no problem. If you just don't mind introducing yourself, that'd be great.
I am Shawna Viola.
Yep, yep, there you go, there you go. The people out there can hear you. There you go. Thank you.
So I'm Shawna Viola, the branch manager of the library in St. Michael's. And, um, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. I want to just express my sincere appreciation to all of you for your continued support of our library expansion. We have looked forward to this for a time and, and I just wanted to share as well that I have patrons who express that, um, desire to have a better building. We want to make things certainly more accessible, um, in that renovated space. It includes quiet study areas, which are necessary. Um, it's, as we have said in the past, you know, it's not your mother's library anymore, so it's not shushing all the time. But we still have ones who need that space when they're doing particular work, so having those quiet study rooms are good. Um, and then a larger meeting room. It's, it is, um, one accessible space in the Bay Hundred area where organizations, nonprofit groups, and even community groups use that space for their regular meetings. And, and we provide that and they appreciate that. And again, as I mentioned, better accessibility, having wider aisles that accommodate a wheelchair, lower shelving for children's area. That's better sight and we can, they can reach the shelves. And even our teen space and our space for young adults. We don't really have one at this point and you all have been in the building and took the tour, so you know what that's like. But just having that enhanced space and where they can then create their STEM projects and, and, uh, and their STEAM things with, which deal with art, so they have a space to do that and that's very important. I, um, I have a comment just from one library patron and I would just like to read that, if I may.
Sure.
This, this says, "My name is Mary Robinson. My husband John and I have been residents of St. Michael's since two thousand and three. Once we moved in, the first place I went was the local library. Little did I realize at the time what an important place that little library would be in my life. The staff have always been warm and welcoming to everyone that walks through the door. They provide a variety of services for the community, classes, computers, events, clubs, meeting rooms, and more. All of this is taking place in a building that is not made to accommodate the variety of services offered by libraries in two thousand and twenty-three. The expansion is needed and the citizens of St. Michael's are looking forward to this happening. The St. Michael's Library is the heart, is truly the heart of St. Michael's. I hope the council will provide all the support needed to make this happen sooner rather than later. The citizens of St. Michael's have been patiently waiting for a long time." And, you know, I, I agreed with that. I thought that was a nice way of saying how much we need that, how much you do support us and we appreciate that and certainly want that to continue.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Co-speaker is Charlie Yonkers. He's on our Board of, uh, Library Directors.
Yeah, my name is Charlie Yonkers. I've been, um, I'm a resident of Whitman. Um, and we've had a home here for thirty-two years. Um, I've been on the board for four years and I reluctantly went on the board, but I realized I was kinda like Bill Peake. I'm a library guy at heart. But my, to my astonishment, I've learned so much and you who are frequenters of the library know of which I speak. And that is that these, uh, the library today has become an engine, and this is an engine of community in a way in which is, it's like the Parks and Recreation Tribute you paid today to, uh, it, it's an interior Parks and Recreation place that the community uses. The door count of the library is astonishingly high. You would not believe how many people come into it all the time, every day. And, uh, I just wanna say on behalf of the board, uh, we have such an extraordinary, we're a governing board, we're not an operations board, but the board as a governing board is immensely proud of this woman who is standing next to me, uh, sitting next to me for her thirty-five years of, uh, engagement in St. Michael's Library, to say nothing of Dana Newman and Scotty Oliver and, and the, and the staff. We have, to our collective benefit, this incredible professional staff. So the expansion of the St. Michael's Library Facility, uh, is an extension to all, not just the Bay Hundred and St. Michael's, but to the whole community, uh, and the utilization of the space in terms of all age groups. You just go in there and you find it out who's using it all the time is amazing. So, uh, we are enthusiastically appreciative of what you've done so far and we look forward to bringing this to fruition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. I really appreciate all your work. Okay. All right, so we're gonna hold that open until the next meeting and, uh, we'll, we'll, uh, vote on these bills, okay?
Mr. Council President, could I have a, just a, a quick moment here before we move on to the next agenda item? We have, uh, just, just as a matter of public record, in regards to bill fifteen thirty-eight, uh, I do understand there's a, there are some community stakeholder meetings in regards to this bill. Uh, one being held tomorrow night, twelve, uh, on July twelfth at six PM in the school cafeteria at CDS, as well as another one on August second, um, as a second, uh, CDS stakeholder meeting. So just as a matter of public record, I wanted to get that, uh, get that out there.
Okay, all right, that sounds good.
Uh, are, are you asking us to hold, uh, the vote on fifteen thirty-eight beyond the July twenty-fifth meeting then?
Uh, pref- preferably after August second, if at all possible, because that, that's when the second, uh, this is, uh, this is a meeting that's scheduled between Talbot County Public Schools as well as, uh, the public, so I think if, if it's possible, I think that would be, uh, the right thing to do.
Can we ask Ms. Sparks in terms of, of the schedule for this, if, if, uh, if holding the vote on that one capital, if we proceed with the rest of the capital enabling legislation on July twenty-fifth, but hold that one until August?
Seventeenth.
Whatever that date is, in August?
Uh, August second is the second meeting that's planned.
August?
August second.
Yep, uh, but are, are the council meeting follow that?
Is August eighth and these bills don't expire until August seventeenth.
So, uh.
That would be a question for Patrick.
Okay.
I mean, I don't see any procedural.
No, it's still within the, the time period.
Okay.
But we would have to act on it at that first meeting at all.
Understood. Well, let, Mr. President, can we plan on scheduling that, that fifteen thirty-eight for August eighth? And the, uh, balance the bills for the regular schedule, which would be our next meeting on July twenty-fifth?
Sure. Mm-hmm.
We need a second for his request.
Okay, so we're.
I'll second the request.
I, I seconded it.
Oh, you did.
Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and, um, hold off, um, and, um, delay fifteen thirty-eight, um, for, until when?
August eighth.
August eighth.
So, on that bill hold, though, I thought that would interfere with their state funding for the renovations.
Well, it, it, it's just on hold. If it goes past that, if it go, if it goes past, um, the August and it becomes a problem, you know, as of right now, it needs to be at least voted on by August. If it goes past seventeen, it becomes a huge problem.
Seventeen, right?
It would expire, right?
It expires. The bill expires.
Yep. That would be a huge problem after that, because of federal funding and state funding. So do we still wanna? Do we still wanna just give it an opportunity of a meeting?
I, I think that's the right thing to do.
Okay, all right.
We'll have time for him.
Yep, yep, no problem. Okay, so we, you've got a motion, we got a second, right? To go ahead and, um, delay fifteen thirty-eight for a few weeks.
Yeah, delay the fifteen thirty-eight vote until the August eighth county council meeting.
Mm-hmm, okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Epstein.
Okay. All right, so we've got, we've got, um, okay. All right, so moving on to fifteen forty-four, Madam Secretary, if you could read that into the record, that'd be great.
Bill number fifteen forty-four, a bill to amend chapter one ninety of the Talbot County Code, zoning subdivision and land development, sections one ninety twenty-five-two, table of land uses, section one ninety twenty-nine, commercial uses, section one ninety twenty-nine point seven N, and section one ninety seventy-eight, terms defined regarding historic ends.
Okay. Um, Mr. Thomas?
Sure, so, um, this is a text amendment that was initiated, um, on application of Rolls-Royce Partners LLC. I know Brendan Malaney is here on behalf of, of the applicant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it proposes to allow, uh, ends as a special exception use in, uh, the county's conservation zoning districts. It would also increase the number of guest rooms from ten to twelve and allow, uh, these historic ends to increase the number of guest rooms outside of the primary structure from two to six.
Okay, all right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Brendan Malaney with McAllister, D.T.R. Show, Walter and Walker, one hundred Northwest Street. Um, I believe you're all familiar with this proposal. It's been a number of years in the making now. Uh, got caught up in discussions with Critical Area to make sure that they, uh, were aware of it ongoing. After what is hopefully an approval by the council, this will go for Critical Area Commission, uh, review and approval. So this isn't the, the last step in this process. I don't need to belabor the, uh, the details, but this is, I would say, a, a rather surgical text amendment. First, let me say that, uh, I represent Rolls-Royce Partners LLC. That is the owner and operator of the George Brooks House in St. Michael's, just north of St. Michael's. Will Workman is on his way, um, wants, wants to be here. If he walks through the door, I'll have him come up and, and join me to say hello. But, um, this, this text amendment is proposed to address a, uh, I would say, a unique problem. And that is that there are historical structures in the county within conservation districts that are not being properly maintained. And in order to provide a, an avenue for a use in historical structures in the conservation districts to, uh, generate enough revenue to maintain themselves, what's proposed is a revision to the inn use in the county to go from what is now ten bedrooms to twelve bedrooms and to, uh, allow by special exception. So any, any use, any property owner that is proposing an inn in a conservation district has to apply for and receive approval of a special exception from the Board of Appeals for every single one, uh, which, which the Planning Commission agreed and, and we agreed, is a good check to ensure that if these uses are going to be in the conservation districts, that, uh, they're appropriate uh, on the properties and on which they're located. Um, the, uh, the proposal, um, in the conservation district has, you know, three, under E, one, two, and three, three other requirements or, or, um, or supplemental criteria. The ends are permitted only when entirely or partially operated within structures located within the Historic Overlay District of Talbot County or listed on the Department of Interior National Register of Historic Places. One early concern from staff and from the Planning Commission was, if we allow this, how widespread of a use can this be? Uh, just to give you an idea, we, we contacted the authorities in the county and there are twenty-nine, excuse me, there are a total of twenty-nine properties that are listed on the National Register. And that twenty-nine includes some of the, uh, historical districts, like the Oxford Historic District and the St. Michael's Historic District. So it's, it's actually much less than twenty-nine that could even qualify. There are twenty total properties located within the Talbot County Historic Overlay District. So twenty-nine properties and twenty properties, there's overlap between the two of those. And I would say the majority of those couldn't, structurally, could not, uh, be used for, for this use. So this is a, a specific text amendment that will address a specific problem that will ensure that, uh, historic structures, where this use may be appropriate, can, can generate revenue to ensure that they're kept up and, and kept in good repair.
Okay.
Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but, um, we believe that this is an appropriate use. It's consistent with other uses in the critical areas around the Chesapeake Bay. And, you know, we look forward to further discussion with the Critical Area Commission to, to have this become law.
Okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Could you, um, clarify something for me, please?
Yes, ma'am.
You said that the, these expansion of, like, um, adding two more rooms was to make these historic, um, places economically viable?
Yes.
How does adding two rooms to, um, a property that already has eight operational, um, make it more viable?
If I could.
Mr. Oracle? Good evening. Sorry, a few minutes late.
Yeah.
What was your question?
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Certainly. Uh, Will Workman. I own the George Brooks House, a historic property in St. Michael's.
The question was, how does adding, going from ten bedrooms to twelve bedrooms significantly impact your ability or, or any inn's ability to, uh, ensure that there's additional revenue to, to keep up the, the historic structure?
The, uh, each additional room obviously provides incremental revenue. Most of the operating costs are relatively fixed, debt, debt service, taxes, staffing, et cetera. So the variable cost is not great. So each room above a certain amount dramatically affects cash flow and profitability. So, uh, those additional two rooms have. So those additional two rooms have more than, if you look at two out of ten is twenty percent. They probably have a forty percent gain on margins or operating profit.
What is your source for that? I mean, did you do a, a study or did you have a financial plan?
I have been operating.
Feasibility study, I should say.
I have been operating two Inns since nineteen eighty five, the Parsonage Inn in St. Michael's. So I have, let's see, twenty-three and fifteen. That's thirty-eight years' experience through good years and bad. And have a real historic sense of cash flows and, and operating margins. The, the historic properties are more expensive to maintain than new construction. So that's an incremental effect on the in versus a new construction.
And dollar wise, how much more would two more rooms generate from what you're already earning?
Probably twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars per room.
How is, how is?
Well, you, you divide the number of rooms by the operating revenue. That's where you come up with that number. And it varies from year to year.
Okay, all right. Got any, any more questions?
Well, I, I guess, I guess as a follow-up to that, that question where, where, where I think she may have been leading on this. If, if the additional guest rooms are, will make the historic in viable. Why are we authorizing guest rooms in a separate structure that is not the historic structure? Why is that essential to the economic viability of the historic structure?
Well, the original structure only supports so many rooms. So the accessory structures are needed to provide those additional bedrooms. And they're already there. They were constructed for that purpose. So they're, they're already in existence. We just need the approval to use them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right, then, Madam Secretary, we, we'll go ahead and leave this open and this will be eligible for vote on the next meeting, right to twenty-fifth.
Yes.
Yep, okay. All right, next on the agenda, County Manager.
Great. Counsel, tonight I have a few items under board and committee appointments. I'm requesting the reappointment of Walter Chase representing the Town of Trap on the Economic Development Commission.
Okay. Is there, is there a motion?
Motion to support Walter Chase.
Okay.
On the Economic Development Planning Commission.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, we got a motion second to put Mr. Chase back on the Economic Development Committee. Can you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay.
Great. Next I have a request from Chesapeake College for approval of their revised fiscal year twenty-four budget. And I'd like to call Karen Smith, the Vice President for Administrative Services, who was kind enough to join us this evening. As you read in your agenda packet, Chesapeake College is requesting a revised budget as a result of some additional state funding that they received in the amount of one million eight hundred eighty-three, eighty-three thousand four dollars from the John A. Cade Funding Formula. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Smith for some additional comments.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon. As you stated, my name is Karen Smith. I'm the Vice President for Administrative Services at Chesapeake College. On behalf of Cliff Coppersmith, our President and our Board of Trustees, we have submitted the college's revised budget for fiscal year twenty-four to the Talbot County Council for approval. The revised budget plan is being presented as a result of increased state funding for fiscal year twenty-four. The college's original budget included projected state funding of three hundred and ninety-four thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. The college actually is receiving one million eight hundred and eighty-three thousand zero, four dollars in new state funding. The revised fiscal year twenty-four budget addresses the difference versus projected in the amount of one point four million dollars. The revised budget does not require any additional support from the colleges by support counties. The college's Board of Trustees met and approved the revised budget on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. The revised budget include, provides a three percent salary increase for our employees, our full-time employees. The original budget did not include any salary increase for our employees, so we're really happy to be able to provide that. The revised budget also includes four prioritized positions, two in the grant-related areas, an Assistant Public Safety Director and a Welding Instructor. The revised budget also includes a one-time fund balance transfer request for fifty thousand dollars to come out of the college fund balance. And this is to address interior door lock replacements across the campus. On behalf of our faculty and staff and students and the distinguished members of our Board of Trustees, it is our pleasure to serve this community and we appreciate your continuing support and the work of the college. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So you need to run around to five county councils and get approval to spend state money, none of which will come out of county coffers that will then inure benefits to Talbot County students?
Yes.
This ought to be about the easiest vote we ever take.
It is a function that you approve our, our operating budget and that, and any fund balance request, so.
Okay, any, any other questions? Well, any other questions? Okay.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion second to go ahead and approve the, the revised budget for the Chesapeake College. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Thanks a lot, Karen. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Next I have a request for a letter of support for service expansion at the Upper Shore Community Mental Health Campus in Chestertown. And I'd like to call Katie Dilly Ford, who's the Executive Director of Midshore Behavioral Health, Inc. This is a letter of support that would go to the Maryland Department of Health regarding service expansion at the Upper Shore Community Mental Health Center in Chestertown. Governor Moore has recently invested four million dollars in state funds to support in, in needed infrastructure at that building. And Katie's here to talk tonight about what that service expansion might look like.
Sure, thank you for having me.
Bill Webb is also here, who's the Health Officer from Kent County.
Come on up, Bill, yeah. You're not gonna get away that, you're not gonna get away that easy.
We always hear from Bill.
Come on, Bill. You know, he's hot back there.
So we appreciate the invitation to come and just highlight the significance of what this request would support. And I know several of you on the council have been involved with the process of advocating for the service expansion and s, infrastructure support needs at the AF Witsit Center, which is also references the Upper Shore Community Mental Health Center. So this evening, you know, the, the request for a letter of support to the Maryland Department of Health would be much appreciated to show your endorsement of a need for a residential treatment facility for a child adolescent population here on the eastern shore. There is some underutilized or unused space that was vacated in two thousand and twenty from the Department of Juvenile Services. That space, I'm not sure how big it is in terms of square footage.
It's about eleven thousand square feet.
Eleven thousand square feet. The, the proposed request is for the state to endorse a, a planning initiative to look at how we can support bringing in a residential treatment facility into that unused space. Now granted, it does have a lot of need in terms of repair and restoration as well as the additional part of the letter which highlights the gratitude that we have for the four million dollars that the Moore administration has allocated to support the building itself, primarily with the boiler room restoration we're anticipating. And you, yeah, I don't know if you want to talk about that a little bit?
Correct. We, we have not gotten a report on how specific.
Hey, Bill, Bill, excuse me, could you tell the public who you are?
I apologize.
No problem.
My name is Bill Webb. I am the, the Health Officer for the Kent County Health Department. The Kent County Health Department operates services in about sixty-eight percent of the building. We're looking to expand services to better, you know, to better, you know, offer treatment to children and adolescent on the, the eastern shore. And we are, you know, we are excited that you are very willing to support this initiative. The need is substantial because these kids have really no resources either on the eastern shore or elsewhere in the state of Maryland.
Thank you.
Yes, that's absolutely correct. So on the eastern shore, we used to have a facility that was based in Cambridge that was operated by Adventist Health, which closed their services in November of two thousand and sixteen. They were a residential treatment facility. That facility is now being occupied and used for an adult substance use treatment facility, which is also a resource that we're very happy to see in the community. However, it's left the eastern shore with absolutely no residential treatment facility for our young people on, on the shore. So we do see a substantial part of our population not just being served on the other side of the bridge, primarily in Baltimore, but also in Delaware. Right now in the state, we have two hundred and eighty-five residential treatment beds. They remain full. The wait lists are usually three to six months to get in. Right here in the midshore community, we currently have five individuals that are waiting for placement in a residential treatment facility, and that's just since July one. That's, those are new referrals that have come in. We've seen the numbers just continue to grow with placements over the last few years. The statistics that we're seeing in terms of need and how our young people are showing up in the emergency departments is just daunting. So the need is absolutely there. When you think of the stress that these families are going through to have to travel to see their loved ones in treatment facilities outside of the jurisdiction. It's a real strain on just the whole family network. So we hope that there will be reception to the recommendation and advocacy through your letter as well as I know other counties in the midshore are supporting and endorsing, sending similar requests into the Department of Health for their planning endorsement and of course, financial support with the planning and, and, and construction of that will come. But this is just one step in the right direction. It's been a lot of work to get this facility back on the state's roster and investment for maintenance to continue to have the, the building be governed by the Department of Health, which is fantastic. But now we're looking at how we can continue to serve our populations.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, we've, we've been reminded, I think repeatedly, about, about these gaps in, in services. And it is, it is really encouraging to see that this move to, to, to open up this facility and make this available. And we have heard about those, that separation that takes place when, when the treatment centers are, are, are far away. So thank you for spearheading this and I'll move for the letter of support.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and send a, a support letter. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
We'll keep you posted.
Okay, thank you.
On any developments.
Thanks for all you do.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Great. And then we have a request from the Department of Public Works to purchase septic tank effluent pump step systems for the Region Two St. Michael's wastewater system as part of the new connections related to Resolution Number two thirty-five. Counsel, as you read in your agenda packet, the Department of Public Works is requesting your approval to procure ten additional Orenco step system units at a cost of sixty-eight thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars. The costs of the step system are here, will be paid for by the users, and Mr. Clark is here to answer any questions you may have.
And Counsel, just for your information, this is actually our third purchase at this point in time. We currently have all the step systems that we have in inventory, which is about five, allocated now to go out the door. So this is to help us replenish that allocation.
All right. Any, any questions?
No.
Okay. All right, um, do you have a motion?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve ten more step systems for Mr. Clark. Is, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Ray. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And then the last comment tonight, Counsel, is just to follow up on the storm event that happened in Tillman on July third. I just want to take a moment and really thank all of our first responders who came out that evening. Department of Emergency Services, our Sheriff's Office, our Roads Department, the Tillman Island Volunteer Fire Department, our Building Inspector and Sarah Kilman, our Communications Officer was down there. We did have a brush drop-off that was held from July fifth through yesterday, July tenth. That was very successful. And I just wanted to remind the public, if your property did suffer any damage, we are helping property owners with emergency permits. And they should contact our permits office if you're having a concern at four-ten-seven-seven-zero-six-eight-four-zero.
Okay, that's great. And that's it?
That's it.
Okay, good job. All right. Next on the agenda is a public comment.
Nobody has signed up this evening, but.
Nobody signed up. So does anybody want to come up and say anything? Nothing? Are you? Okay, okay, that's good, that's good. Okay, um, all right, we'll start the council comments. Mr. Step?
Uh, we wished everyone a before.
Yeah.
A happy fourth. I hope it's, everyone had a wonderful fourth. I know we had the storms and everything. But thank you for the thanks, Jess, for, for everyone and all the residents that made it through that. But yeah, I hope everyone had a happy fourth.
Uh, yeah, in, in addition to that county effort to help the post-storm, post-storm cleanup in Tillman, which was really a cross-departmental effort. And, and thanks to all of those who stepped up, those were, those were not normal work hours. Not all of them anyway. I also wanted to take note of the retirement of Chief Tony Smith down in St. Michael's as of the end of June. In his, in his usual fashion, as a builder of community, Chief Smith spent the whole time talking about what everybody else did to support him in the community. And he will continue to be serving us now as a new appointee, civilian member of our Talbot Family Network. A, a man with, with service at his heart. Thanks to him for all of his years of, of, of service to the community. I will make a final note, which is that I will do my best to be here in a timely fashion for our next council meeting on July twenty-fifth, coming off the Appalachian Trail with our scouts, but there's always that possibility.
Thanks, Mr. Lusher.
Thank you. Since I've been on the county council, I've received many emails from constituents regarding Lakeside, whether it was reset Lakeside or fixed Lakeside. And some of them reciting the fixed Lakeside petition. And I wanted to publicly announce that I hear you. There's been much misinformation about the status of the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for Lakeside and the county's response to MDE that has been circulating. And I want to take this opportunity to set the record straight on the county's plan to address MDE's requests. Just a little background, in November of two thousand and twenty, MDE approved the county's Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan Amendment for the Lakeside Development, which was adopted by the county through Resolution two eighty-one as amended. In MDE's letter to the county giving notice of its approval of the resolution as amended, it noted that the resolution did not contain the numbers of EDUs, equivalent dwelling units, for the different phases of the Lakeside Development. MDE stated that this information is necessary to assess the adequacy of the water and sewer systems to accommodate and serve those units. MDE provided a table showing the EDUs for the first three phases of the development and requested that the Town of Trap provide updated EDUs for phases two and three and the next Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan Amendment. No specific deadline was established for doing that. On or about October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, MDE issued a groundwater discharge permit for the Lakeside Development with a permit flow of a hundred thousand gallons per day. At two hundred and fifty gallons per day per EDU, this would allow approximately four hundred homes to be built in Phase One. MDA made it clear that any future releases or expansion of the. MDE made it clear that any future releases or expansion of the wastewater treatment plant would require a major permit modification. I then introduced Resolution Three Thirty-eight on February twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-three to incorporate provisions of the discharge permit into the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan and to provide that any future expansion of Lakeside wastewater treatment plant would require an amendment to the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan in addition to a major permit modification. On March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Public Works Advisory Board recommended that the council approve that resolution. Subsequently, by letter dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, MDE informed the county that the EDU issue cited in its November two thousand and twenty letter needed to be addressed now. It established a deadline that didn't exist before. MDE also informed the county that Exhibits A and B to the Resolution, Resolution Two Eighty-One as amended, showed properties not part of the Lakeside development as having incorrect water and sewer classifications. According to MDE, accordingly, MDE requested the county provide, one, updated EDUs for all phases of the Lakeside development; two, updated figures for water and sewer service with the correct classifications for all parcels within the Town of Trap, including Lakeside; and three, corrected Exhibits A and B to Resolution Two Eighty-One as amended. MDE specifically stated the county should submit the new amendment to the MDE within ninety days of receipt of the letter. The approval process for Resolution Three Thirty-eight was stayed and the council is diligently addressing the two issues. First, with respect to the phases in the EDUs for the Lakeside development, we are working on a resolution with a goal to introduce it at our next meeting, July twenty-fifth. The resolution will proceed through the usual Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan Amendment process, that is, review and recommendations by the Public Works Advisory Board and the Planning Commission with public hearings and public hearings for the council, all before a vote and submission to MDE for final approval. So we want to make it clear that we are having an open process and a transparent process. Second, with respect to the water and sewer classifications for the town, the county has provided MDE with draft maps showing the current water and sewer classifications for the town and is awaiting a response. It's not anything new. They're the current classifications. MDE is not requiring any changes to the existing water and sewer classifications for the town, including the Lakeside development at this time. And again, we want to set the record straight that we're being transparent on these issues. Any future changes to the existing water and sewer classifications for the Town of Trap will proceed through the usual Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan Amendment process. As I've indicated, Public Works Advisory Board, Planning Commission, public hearings and approval by the council. Again, we want to be transparent on everything that we do with regard to the Comprehensive Sewer Plan for the county and specifically for the Town of Trap. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Milky.
What'd she say?
Yeah. Okay. I got you. I got you.
That's it. I have no comments.
That's good. Okay. I just wanted to comment too about Trap Two and that was a scary night, that's for sure.
Tillman.
Or Tillman. Tillman, not Trap. Yeah, sorry. But no, all the emergency services and, you know, the police and fire and it was good to hear Clay call and that three homes that were damaged in Red Cross was there-
Yes.
-to help them and I did follow up on several people that called me, so it was good to know that we had great people out there to serve emergency services and Brian from Public Works did a great job cleaning things up and we set up a station out there on Black Walnut Point for debris and stuff like that, that people could take stuff to. So I think we pretty much have got everything cleaned up in Tillman and like you say, if anybody needs any help insurance-wise, please give us a call and we can help.
Okay. The county council will be holding a workshop on its response to the Maryland Department of the Environment regarding equivalent dwelling units or EDUs for Trap on Wednesday, July nineteenth, beginning at five o'clock PM, to be followed by a closed session to discuss personnel matters at the conclusion of the workshop. The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, July twenty-fifth, beginning at five o'clock PM. The council will be convening an open session at four o'clock PM and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene as noted?
So moved.
Okay. We got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks a lot.